Call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Pastor Ebs?
Good evening.
Evening.
Let's pray.
All right.
Father, there's a World Series game going on and we're here. So I think that calls for double blessings on everyone that made it tonight, Lord. I just thank you for these men and women that are in this room and all the people that they represent. I thank you for their faithfulness, for their hard work, for their love for this city, for the wisdom and the energy and the talents and the giftedness that you've given them. And I pray, Father, that they would lead well or much is given, much is required. And I just pray for wisdom for this council. I pray, God, for your hand of blessing. Lord, where else can we go to say, "Lord, bless us"? Lord, you're it. And so, Father, we come and say, "God, bless us. Bless these men and women. Guide them this night." This night, Father, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? No changes. I would like to delete item 12, the second part of it, of personnel, but we would still have a closed session for probable litigation. Is there any other changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. So discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizen comments. We have three individuals that would like to address the council tonight. I just want to remind everyone that you get three minutes and the... Who's the timekeeper today?
That's a sheriff. Three ways, isn't it?
First is W.C.
Mayor Hill, honorable sirs, gentle ladies, I rise this evening. It is too late to amend the agenda, but I respectfully request that when you debate item 6B, the birthday of the United States Marine Corps, that you change the date from 4th November to 10th November. I do thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your attention to this matter.
That's a big mistake. Thank you, Mr. Bremner.
The proclamation.
Okay. Thank you. The proclamation has a correct date. Next on the list is Mr. L. Rogers from Zion.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My comments are in no way a reflection on any particular department, but as a whole, a lack of communication to the residents in a timely manner on situations of great importance. I think we dropped the ball this past week when we had the situation with the young man being arrested over at Central Middle School and the untimely response by our police department. But again, that's one instance. I guess I'm looking for some direction as to who makes that call and how should it come and what is the timely manner in which it should come. I understand the school district plays a role, but the city plays a role also in getting information to the residents in a timely manner.
I'll respond to that. For this incident, I agree with Mr. Rogers. I think that the police department did drop the ball at not getting this particular incident and the arrest out on at least social media by Friday morning and releasing the press release. L. and I have talked a couple of times today and explained what happened. There's no excuse for what happened. It was an incident that we actually address by Saturday with our staff. So I would say he's correct on that. As far as setting policy and stuff, that's up to the city council. For the police department, I mean, it's very difficult to have a set standard of what will be released and when because it often depends on what type of investigation it is, who's involved. As we talked before, juvenile information, we're not going to release... We can release information about the incident, but we can't release juvenile information, stuff like that. So we're, you know, we're kind of stuck here with a lot of different scenarios that require a lot of different responses. So there isn't going to be a set criteria for each response that we have. But in this particular situation, I agree, this should have got out sooner, at least on our end. I can't speak for the school's end.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And I guess I'll go a little bit farther and I think... Two things I want to say, and I'll take the... I appreciate you saying that that's your responsibility, but I think it's the responsibility of the city council and I... To request that we have a policy on something like that. And I think we can put something together that may not be specific to each and every individual action that takes place, but I think there can be something generally put out that if it's a... And I'm just talking off the top of my head right now, that if it's an issue that affects a wide number of people in the community, it would not inhibit or anyway affect an investigation. I think we can come up with a policy. The second thing I wanted to say is that I think the city council is... I think we need to put together a social media type of policy. Some of us have talked about it in the past. Unfortunately, I'm 66 years old and I'm not involved in all the things in the social media, so I don't know what's out there and what has to go out there and what should go out there. But I don't think this is strictly the police department's responsibility. I think that us as a city council need to put that together and come up with a policy that will address everything.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think that's one of the reasons why we formed the Cubs Commission, and that has actually been addressed or talked about in our Cubs meeting, how we get information out to our residents. So it's something that's on our agenda. It's actively being discussed.
Next is Mr. Clyde Mclemore from Zion.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I want to say thank you, Chief, for returning my calls and giving back to me in a timely manner. I was hoping that I could be instrumental in trying to get you some information that I was able to get through my investigation and going out, doing things. Come to the council to ask y'all. I've been coming to this council about the last four, five years. There's some issues that I've been coming up here with. I know everybody here don't too much care for my character or my presentation, but sometimes forget to present and listen to the message, you know? And these little three minutes that we get, you know, it goes in one ear and out the other ear. There's nothing been done about it. For instance, example, parking on the street. We've been talking about that for two years. You know, that law's been on the book for the longest. That's when we had one family, one car in the family. You know what I'm saying? The way these houses was built back then, they didn't have room for that. That's one issue, these old laws. We still got ordinances that you can't plant a tree in the middle of the road. I check all the time, see if this stuff has changed, if it's even been addressed. I've been here, I've said it so much, it's like I'm a tape recorder. But it's, you know, it's Clyde. It's only Clyde, you know? Actually, we're tired of it. I mean, what is the citizen's comment about, man? If we can't get... Nothing is being said. Nothing has been done about what we said or are we just a moot moment? You know, I was glad to hear Commissioner McDowell say something is being done in Cub. I remember that was over about four, five months ago. It ain't been done yet. Keep talking about it, when we go get some action around here on some things that be done. These old laws, these old ordinances on this book, it's some old stuff. It's a new thing, new sheriff in town. We've got a new mayor, we've got new commissioners. Only person... Lord, these... Mr. Deteen is only old when they've been here, you know? I mean, not by age, but you know?
Picking on me.
He's only one of them. He got the old loop, but you got the old same old books, the same old stuff, you know? I didn't mean it literally. You know, I know when I get to talking, I go, but I'm just tired, man. I'm really tired. I'm really tired. Some things need to be done. If you go sit there and be the Mary Stiles at the leadership, if you go be the leader, lead. You know what I'm saying? That's all I got. Thank you.
So may I respond to that?
Yes.
That's a good time. Three minutes, that's all I have. I do agree with you and I can say that some of the policies have been reviewed. I know the parking is one that you and I talked about specifically. And it's not just as swift as, you know, striking a pin that everything is there because there's logistics throughout the city that, I mean, that becomes an issue when it's snow plowing and things like that. So it's not something that you just change by the flip of a hat because, you know, it's making some people uncomfortable. But it is definitely something that's being considered. I know it doesn't move as quickly as you would like, but I can say at least, you know, for myself and I'm pretty sure for everyone else up here, when people do speak or they bring things into the council, it is reviewed and addressed. I think that we have an opportunity to come back to you and let you know either, one, it's being reviewed, or you know what, I'm not going to be able to do anything about that. And here are the reasons why. So I thank you for that. So, but that's...
I have a comment. It actually was addressed by the council. There was another resident that brought that to our attention and we did discuss it and decided not to change it.
Yeah. I was going to say the parking issue, which you've raised several times, that was a council meeting that you did not attend and Chief Dumian had addressed the parking issue on the street. Why it has remained the same? Chief, if you would... Don't mean to put you on the spot. That's okay. If you would care to talk about that.
I think one of the main reasons that we talked about that or that we brought it up was it was a benefit for us in dealing with some of the late night parties and keeping them from getting out of control, keeping people off the street late at night. I just recently took a complaint from a young lady who actually brought that up, that she was upset that it wasn't being enforced in her neighborhood because you had people sitting out in the cars, drinking, and causing all kinds of ruckus at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. And she says, "If you're enforcing that 2:00 to 6:00 parking, they're going to move on. They're going to be gone." That was one of the big issues that we kept it and we liked having it on the books was it gave us a tool to keep people from congregating, lingering on the streets at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, playing their music, stuff like that. So it is a good tool for us in that aspect. I don't think that it pertains to the street cleaner or any of that stuff like it used to. I mean, that was one of the issues that was on the book.
That's how it was written.
You know, and I don't think the street cleaner's out at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning like it used to be.
Not anymore.
So... But that was one of the things that we brought up for the police department. It is a good tool for us to dismantle some of these parties that get out of control at night. It keeps people from lingering on the street, playing their music and things like that. So for, like the commissioner says, for every change that we make, then we have another issue that comes up. And that's honestly a big issue. People out on the street at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, hanging out in their cars, playing music and congregating. For the people that want to sleep, they're calling us and they want us to implement that 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. parking ordinance.
And the Monaco site does a good job of telling you what ordinances have recently changed. So when you go out there and look, it gives you a reference for things that have been recently updated.
I would also like to point out that the government is slow and it's designed to be slow. And it's designed to be slow because when we're making decisions... Now, not all the decisions cost money, but if we want somebody to go through and look at all of our ordinances and change the ordinances and write up ordinance that have to change the ordinance, we're going to be spending a lot of money. And government is slow because we're spending your money. We're not spending our money. And when we spend your money, we have to be sure that we do it correctly. If you want to go out and, let's say you own a restaurant and you want to put a new parking lot in, you can call somebody up and they can come out and put that new parking lot in tomorrow. We can't do it that way. We have to be sure that the parking lot needs to be done, there needs to be engineering done on it, we have to go out to bids. It's just a slow process and that's... Government is designed to be slow because we're spending somebody else's money and not our own money. And I would love to sit down with you sometime and go over all the things that have changed here. You may not see them all, but I would love to go over them and there's been a lot of changes in the city.
Item number six is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on October 18th, 2016 at 7:01 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on October 18th, 2016 at 7:38 p.m. Bills vouchers 124908 through 124992 drawn on First Merit Bank. Proclamation, United States Marine Corps, 241st birthday, November 4th, 2016. Receive and place on file treasurers report for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2016.
Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Just the update to the date. Yes. And I... I'll read the proclamation. It says, "I, Albert W. Hale, Mayor of the City of Zion, Illinois, do hereby proclaim that on the 10th day of November 2016, the City of Zion, County of Lake, State of Illinois, does honor the United States Marine Corps and all those who have honorably served therein on this the 241st birthday of the Corps. Be it further proclaimed, an official copy of this proclamation be forwarded to the Commandant of the Marine Corps Headquarters, Marine Corps, Washington, DC, dated the first day of November 2016." And I also wanted to read... There's a memo here from Director Nabel. He is ill tonight, so he wasn't here. But the Treasurers Report for the Fiscal Year Ending April 30th, 2016. Per 30 ILCS 15 state statute, we are required to publish and provide to council an annual report of all monies received and from what source all monies paid out during the year in excess of $2,500 in the names of the payee. All monies paid on compensation for personnel in the increments shown on the report and a summary statement of operations for all fund account groups. The report is for the period 5/1/2015 to 4/31/2016. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion? And a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolutions as follows. 7A is a resolution of improvements by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, CDBG funds for sidewalk...
I'm sorry, MFT funds?
I'm sorry. MFT funds for sidewalk replacement and installation of handicap ramps for Director Colangelo. Is it?
You were right the first time. It is CDBG funds.
Okay.
What you have in front of you is a resolution that the city is required to pass to apply for community development block ramp funding. Staff is seeking grant assistance for sidewalk replacement and installation of handicap ramps at various locations throughout the city. Staff requests and recommends approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item eight is considering... Consider passing ordinance as follows. 8A to lease certain property located in Zion right of way south of the building located at 2264 per Director Ianson.
That's unshared, Your Honor. This is a right-of-way lease that we approved last year when a new business moved into the building. They didn't meet the parking requirements, so they requested to lease a portion of the 23rd Street right-of-way for five additional parking spots.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine is discussion authorization and approval. 9A is consider approval of intergovernmental agreement by and between the Beach Park Fire Protection District and the City of Zion Fire and Rescue Department regarding the joint operation of aerial ladder apparatus per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. FEMA has opened up 2016 AFG grant assistance to firefighter grant runs October 11th through November 18th, 2016. Chief Tierney approached me recently with the opportunity to participate in a regional grant process for a new aerial ladder truck. So we own a 96 Pierce ladder truck, 105-foot... I'm sorry, 99 Pierce 105-foot. Beach Park owns a 1991 105-foot ladder truck. Currently, both of them are nearing their replacement age. Actually, Beach Park's there. To purchase a new truck these days, you're looking at $1 to $1.5 million just to start. That's the cost. So by submitting a regional grant on behalf of both communities, there's a possibility that we get this grant and can purchase a truck at a lesser cost. Beach Park, since they have the older truck and part of it consolidation, has offered to pay for the grant process and then actually purchase the truck at their expense. And then as we move forward on the consolidation and we get closer to a point where we're sharing apparatus, the IGA allows for us to have a written agreement then to share expenses for the truck, maintenance, et cetera, and then possibly share personnel, depending on how far we go with consolidation at that point. So the specifics is before we can submit for a regional grant, you have to have an IGA saying, "Yes, both communities, both departments agree that at some point we might share that vehicle." So that's the purpose of the IGA you have in front of you. So it's been reviewed by our city attorney and found to be legally sufficient, so I'm requesting approval to move forward on the IGA as part of a regional grant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion? And a second. Is there a discussion?
One question, Chief. So actually, this agreement is assuming we are going to share the ladder truck.
Correct.
It's not Mike.
Correct. If we are... If we're awarded the truck, then the idea is that we would share.
And it's for a period of three years and then renewal is one year or you're just going to keep renewing at the three-year option? Is that how it works?
Well, maybe I'd probably say it's a three-year option. I mean, we have to get something in the grant at this point so we can submit it. A lot of this is going to depend also where we go forward with the whole consolidation process, if and when we get awarded the vehicle.
I'm assuming that if we get awarded the vehicle, this is a commitment that we will participate in cost of maintaining it and...
Yeah, I mean, that would be the logical thing to do.
And we'll have the benefit of the vehicle as well.
Right, right, right. I mean, I just want to be sure that everybody understands so we don't come back here in six months or whatever when we've got a vehicle and then we say, "Oh, no, no, we don't have that in our budget. We need to..." We're kind of making a commitment for that now. And we're maintaining our own aerial truck right now?
Yeah. We have one right now. The background to this is many years ago, we had the only aerial and then we shared it with Winthburn, Newport, Beach Park. Basically, it was a responsibly old truck. And then we got to the point where Winthburn wanted a truck, so they went and bought one. Beach Park wanted a truck, so they went and bought one. Newport's the only one that never went and bought a truck.
How many floors does it require before you need an aerial truck?
Well, it depends on your community. So the definition of a high-rise is seven stories or greater. We technically don't have any high-rises in town except for Midwestern, which is six. But with the extension of a ladder, you have reach for extinguishment capability, so you can stick that ladder out 105 feet. You can do roof work without having to stand on a roof.
Right. And we haven't... I mean, it seems to me we have more than... We have skyscrapers compared to the surrounding.
Compared to the others, yes. Yes.
So, okay.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B, consider waiving bids and accept the quote from M.E. Simpson Company to perform a citywide leak detection survey of the city's water main system per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have is a quote from M.E. Simpson Company to perform a citywide leak detection survey of the city's water main system. M.E. Simpson has performed these services for the city in the past, plus large meter testing for the city and the Lake County Public Water District. During last year's testing, several leaks were found in the system and repaired. The city's non-revenue water losses have dropped from 18.9% to 12.1%. At the current water rates built of the city, this would be a savings or an expense reduction of $94,000 annually. In addition, the regulations set forth by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources is to achieve no more than 12% non-revenue water losses by 2017 and 10%, and this is a typo, by 20... The year 2020. The leak detection survey is also part of the city's correction action plans at IDNR to help achieve these parameters. Staff had originally budgeted $30,000 in the water fund for a sanitary sewer slip lining project, but now feel that that project can be moved to next year. Staff request and recommends utilizing that funding, waiving bids, and awarding the contract to a preferred vendor, M.E. Simpson Company, for a citywide leak detection survey in an amount of $26,517.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion?
So, Director? So the date for 2017 is correct, just the 2018 was a mistake?
Yeah, the 2018 was a typo. I had verified through our water supervisors, 2020, that they want us down to 10.
My question is if this company did a water study for us and they reduced it from 18 or almost 19% to 12%, why didn't they get the 12%? What makes us think they're going to reduce it past 12% this time?
Well, that's our opinion. That's not their opinion. They're not going to give us an opinion on it. We feel... Because what happens, Your Honor, is you want to do annual leak detection, usually after you do hydrant flushing, because when the city does a citywide hydrant flushing, that disturbs the system. So if you have any leak points or stress points, that's when you start springing leaks. The other issue is on this year's survey, the newer parts of the city are PVC water main and what they're going to do is normally on the metallic pipe, your listening points are like 400 to 500 feet apart. On the plastic pipe, because it doesn't transmit the signal, you know, the sound as well, the listening points are now multiplied and they'll be testing every 150 feet.
And what do they listen for?
For leaks.
You can hear people...
Their equipment actually... What they do is they hook onto hydrants, valves, mainline valves, water services to valves, water services to people's houses, and the equipment will actually pick up the sound of a leak. You, you will actually hear a hissing, and you'll hear it between two points, and then they start moving in, and they, they have found them at people's residences, right, you know, to the, pretty much pinpointing their backyard.
It's pretty fascinating, really. At the conference this year, there were some vendors who kind of walked me through that process, and it's real stuff.
We, we had one, we had one, one house itself that we found a leak on, and we estimated that the city was losing three and a half million gallons, because it was leaking in the backyard and going straight into their sewer. And without these guys doing this, we'd have never found it. It would just kept running away.
Did, did we ever get any results? We were going to do some testing on where the water comes out of the Lake County Water District and.
Yes, we did that.
And how?
And actually, the, the testing showed that the master meters were off a little bit, but it was to the favor of the Water District, according to the results.
So is that good for us or bad for us?
Well, got to remember, I, I mean, they haven't came back to us within any, you have an injury standard, and you want to be like within 2%, and I want to say, what was it, 3.4% or, it was pretty close.
You're asking me to remember something that happened, it'll be two meetings ago.
Okay.
But I do know that Don Wyler, General Manager, is making sure that calibrations are correct.
Exactly.
We're remeasuring, I think, the, the main storage tank.
Mm-hmm.
To make sure that the calculations are correct for the drawdown. So he should, he should make sure that, you know, everything is correct going out from us to you.
Right.
And, and for, just for my, refresh my memory on how it's determined, how much money or how much water we use versus Winthropower versus the State of Illinois?
We're, we're roughly 80% of the usage.
Right, but how is that determined? I, I mean.
It's determined, there's a master meter that feeds everything out of the Water District plant. And then as it separates and goes toward the lakefront to the park, or goes into Winthropower from the high and low side, there's other meters, so there's five other meters. So basically, what it is, is those five meters are calibrated in red, and that usage is subtracted off the master meter, which leaves the plant, and that's how Zion's built.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 9C is consider quotes for snow removal replacement equipment in the Public Works Department per Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. During the process of inspecting and prepping the snow removal equipment for the upcoming winter season, the Fleet Manes Division found three vehicles needing replacement of plows and plow frames. These vehicles have been repaired and rewelded over time and no longer can be temporarily repaired. Staff requested three quotes for replacement, and they are as follows. Master Truck and Trailer, $16,099.73. Herman Brothers, $16,062.00 and zero cents of mashup equipment, $17,316.30. The difference between the low quote and the next highest is $37.73. Due to the proximity of the second lowest quote to the city, staff recommends and requests accepting the quote from Master Truck and Trailer of Waukegan, Illinois, in the amount of $16,099.73. Funding will be split between the Public Works Motor Equipment Line item and the street and bridge fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 9D, and I'll, is consider approval of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Zion and the Zion Building Department and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division, from May 1 of 2016 through April 30 of 2018, per Director Nabel. Since Director Nabel isn't here, I will introduce this. I think you all know, we've talked about this numerous occasions. And all three of these are up for consideration tonight. We, these are only, they're actually only, well, I guess they are three-year contracts, but we're behind in what we made a commitment to all three unions that we will begin negotiations in November so that we can have an idea of where we are before we start our budget process. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Of a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
In a second. Is there discussion?
Just one, one question. On, on page 12, there's this sentence, "For a period of May 1, 2016 to May 1, 2017, the city agrees that it will not lay off any bargaining unit employees." I thought that was just during the bargaining process, but this extends it to May 1, 2017. Now, that was in, in one of the original versions of this. Is that changed?
No, that has not changed. That should not be in there.
That's what it's going to be.
No, this should not be in.
Oh, that should not be in there.
Yes, so if someone could amend their motion, and I'm guessing it says that in.
It says it in all of them.
Yeah. That should be removed from all the contracts. The, the item that we were talking about, that they would be.
Just during the bargaining process.
That would be that they would be, they would, they would be allowed to strike. There's a no-strike clause in here, but they would be allowed to strike while we're, if we're in negotiations and we can't come to an agreement, that that would allow them the ability to strike. And that is. I think it's on the last page. Yeah, it's on the last page. "Party shall reopen the collective bargaining agreement by November 1, 2016 for sole purpose negotiating wage rates for fiscal year 2017. During this time, the provisions of Article 23 shall not apply." And Article 23 is the article that says that they can't strike.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that needs to be removed from the.
I amend the motion to approve the three contracts, striking the sentence beginning for the period of May 1, 2016 to May 1, 2017, on page 12.
Okay. Is, can you, who had the second? The, will you amend? Okay, we have amended motion and amended second. Is there further discussion? Thank you. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 9E is consider approval of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Zion and Zion Clerical Employees and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division, from May 1, 2016 through April 30 of 2018. Is there a motion?
Is that language in that contract?
It's on page 14. Same language. Yes. Which one?
14.
14.
Make sure the motion reflects that initially.
Yep.
Oh, are we doing the clerical?
Yes, clerical.
Oh, that's on page 12.
No, it's on 14.
Oh, 14.
Yeah, clerical's on 14.
So I make a motion to approve the IOE operating contract for, what's striking the sentence beginning for the period of May 1, 2016 to May 1, 2017, on page 14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. 9F is consider approval of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Zion and Zion Public Works Department and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division, from May 1, 2016 through April 30, 2018, per Director Nabel.